Possible. Some may have misunderstood our direction, especially those quick to say na puro papel, as in polisiya lang ang ginigibok ang SK Federation. But let me be clear about this and let me debunk it as well. This work is not about empty paperwork or policies for display. It is about building a strong, lasting systems that connect barangays, schools, and the city, so that youth leadership is not just symbolic, but also powerful and enduring. Knowing that our term is only expected to last for two years, we are not here to waste a single day. We are here to create impact and initiate changes that will outlive our time in office, benefit those who come after us, and strengthen the youth governance ecosystems for generations of Nagan youth to come. We believe, and we stand firmly by this, that no advocacies, no program, no projects, no activities can ever thrive or create real impact or be sustained if the very foundation of our youth governance system is weak, fragmented, or disconnected. Without strong systems, even the most impressive events fade into memory. But with them, every effort has the power to last, to grow, and to transform communities long after we are gone. So yes, we focus on systems, because that is how you build a legacy worth defending, just like when Naga City first gave birth to its so-called good governance. And in doing this work, we remember what Mayor Lenny Robredo once said during her inaugural speech, that the eyes of the entire nation are on Naga. Every reform we pass, every system we strengthen, and every leader we develop will not only shape our city, but also inspire other communities across the country. The nation is watching, and let us show them how it's done. The nation is watching not just for what we say, but also for what we do. And in proving ourselves, we must remember why Naga stood out in the first place, because Naga has never been just another city. We are a community that has proven, time and again, that honest, principled, and participatory governance is not only possible, but also powerful. From the days when our leaders first opened the doors of City Hall to ordinary citizens, to the years when our people stood united to protect our gains, Naga has been living proof that government can be both excellent and humane. And now, it's our turn. It's the youth's turn to carry that tradition forward and write the next chapter of the story. We are not just starting from scratch. We inherit a legacy built on trust, transparency, and conviction that every Nagan you has the rightful place in shaping our city's future. That's why I also urge my fellow members of the Sanggungang Panlungsood to consider the report that I will submit today. Today, I submit to the Sanggungang Panlungsood the consolidated youth situation reports from our six months consultation across the four SK districts as defined under City Ordinance 2025-029. This is not just a document of statistics and stories. It is a mirror reflecting the true conditions, the aspirations, and the urgent needs of our youth. My hope is that every official in this chamber and in our barangays will take these to heart and act decisively upon them. I urge my fellow colleagues to study these findings, identify priority actions, and ensure that they are reflected in our city's legislative and budget priorities for the coming year, because history will not remember us for how loudly we spoke, but for how loudly or deeply we built. Our term is short. The challenges are great, and the temptation to settle for token projects is real. But we cannot afford to treat this work as ceremonial. Every decision, every effort, every ordinance that we pass, they must all answer one question: Will this matter five years from now, ten years from now, or twenty years from now? If we act with urgency and purpose, the systems we strengthen today will outlast us and empowering generations of Nagan youth. If we don't, what we leave behind will weaken with time. So this is not just my work or the SK Federation's work. It is our shared responsibility.
Morning, Councilor Felix. You have already consumed more than five minutes. Wind up your speech.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I will read my last paragraph, Mr. Chair. This is not just-
Last paragraph or last sentence?
Last three sentences, Mr. Chair.
Wind up your speech now.
Okay, Mr. Chair. So to every SK official, youth organization, and partner in government and civil society, please stand with us and let us align our efforts, share our strengths, and build a youth governance worthy of trust placed on us. And as we move forward, let me repeat again the very first line that I have spoken earlier. The worst thing that we can take away from the youth is not their future, but their faith that they have won. And here in Naga, we will make sure that that belief never dies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Felix. Let me acknowledge the presence of Counselor Jill Uying Rosales, Counselor Maria Corazon Peña Flor, Claro Alfonso of the Namasped, and Ramon Florendo, the Public Market Superintendent. Any other member of the council who wishes to deliver a privileged speech? Counselor Elmer Valdemoro. Five minutes.
Maraming salamat, inoong pangulo. Maikli lang po ito. Sa ating pangalawang punong lungsod, Ginagalang Gabriel H. Burdado Jr., mga kasangguni, Ginoong Mont Florendo, Ginoong Claro Alfonso, mga kapwa nating kasamahan, kawanin sa pamahalang lokal ng Naga, sa mga mamahayag na nandirito ngayon, sa ating mga butihing panauhin, sa mga nanunuod by a livestream, sa mga minamahal kong Naganyo, mga binibinit magino, magandang araw sa ating lahat. Noong isang linggo, sa ating ikalimang palagiang sesyon, ay naipasa natin ang ordinanasa na nagpapatupad sa pagtaas ng sahod ng ating mga kawanin dito sa lokal na pamahalaan ng Naga. Alin sunod sa Executive Order Number 64 Series of 2024 ni Pangulong Ferdinand Marcos Jr. Sa kahilingan ng ating punong lungsod, Maria Leonor Robredo, nagisagawa tayo ng reversion ordinance na nagkakalaga ng labinglimang milyon peso para mapunduhan ang karagdagang sahod ng ating mga kawanin. Sa bisan ng ating inaprubahan ordinancea, may isasakatuparan na ang ikalawang pag-usad ng talaan ng sahod ng mga empleyado dito sa ating lokal na pamahalaan simula ngayong buwan ng Agosto. Madaragdagan na ang kakayahan ng ating mga trabaho na makasabay sa pagtaas ng presyo ng mga bilihin at mga gastusin sa pang-araw-araw. Tungkol naman sa ating mga kawanin na job order at contractual, meron ang ordinanasa na nagsasaad na kung may direktiban sa umento sa sahod galing sa Dole, may kaukulang umento rin sa kanilang mga sahod. Sa pag-aproba natin ng karagdagang sahod sa ating mga kawanin sa pamahalaang lokal, may mga kawanin ng barangay ang lumapit sa akin para magtanong at sabay na rin na humingi ng tulong para sa pagtaas din ng kanilang mga sahod. Matatandaan po na bawat ikatatlong taon, nagkakaroon din sila ng pagtaas ng kanilang city counterpart. Ang pinakahuling pagtaas ng stipend ng mga barangay volunteers ay noong 2022. Ako po ang naghain ng naturang panukala kasama ang dating pangulo ng Liga ng Mabarangay, Kuncihal Antonio Beltran. At salamat sa ating mga kasamahan noon na kanilang inaprubahan at naging ordinance number 2022-006. Kasama rin po tayo noong 2015 at 2018 bilang isa sa mga nagtulak na maipasa ang ordinance number 2015-054 at ordinance number 2018-112. Sa bisan ng ordinance number 2015-054, nagkaroon ng pag-akyat sa stipend simula September 2015. Samantalang bagamat naipasa ang ordinance number 2018-112 noong 2018, naging epektibo ang pagtaas ng stipend ng Enero 1, 2019. Ang mga barangay volunteers ay kasama natin sa paglilingkod sa ating lungsod at sa pagpapatupad ng mga programa para sa ating mga kababayan. Mahalaga ang kanilang papel para masigurong naibabaan natin sa laylayan ng lipunan ang mga proyekto at aktibidad na magpapaunlad pa sa ating lungsod. Nararapat lang na bigyan din natin sila ng narapat na atensyon at tugunan din natin ang kanilang sitwasyon. Kaya kasama ang pangulo ng Liga ng Mabarangay si Kuncihala Maria Corazon M. Peña Flor, nais naming isulo ngayon ang isang ordinanasa na layong magbigay ng umento sa buwan ng stipend ng lahat ng mga barangay volunteers sa Naga. Sa tulong at mahintulot nyo, minumungkahi namin ni Kuncihal Peña Flor na madagdagan ng 500 pesos ang kanilang buwan ng City Counterpart Honorary. Naintindihan namin na halos patapos na ang taon, Agosto ngayon, at ang pundun ng siyudad ay halos paubos na para maipatupad ang naturang dagdag sahod. Ang nais lang po namin ay pag-usapan na ito ngayon, at kung maari, aprubahan sa taon na ito kahit pa sa unang araw ng Enero 2026 ipatupad. Ipatingil lang natin ang mensahe sa ating mga barangay volunteers na nakikinig din tayo sa kanila at tanda tayong tumulong para kahit paano ay masabayan nila ang nagmamahalang mga gastusin sa araw-araw. Noong nakaraang webes, nagkaroon ng pagpupulong ang City Development Council Executive Committee na kinabibilangan namin ni Kuncihal Ason Peña Flor. At sa ginanap na pulong, ang representante ng City Budget Office ay nagsumitina ng posibleng budget natin sa susunod na taon na pwedeng tumaas ng 300 milyon pesos na pwedeng pagkunan ng budget nitong aming panukalang ordinanasa. Sa aming mga kasalukuyang kasamahan sa Sangguniyan at pinapakiusap namin sa tagapangulo ng Committee ng Alitntunin na isali sa talaan ng pakasang pag-uusapan ngayon ang aming isinusulong na ordinanasa. Katulad po ng ating Liga President, ako po ay galing din sa barangay at alam naman po nating lahat ang pinagdadaanan ng ating mga barangay volunteers. Mumuntiman po ang kanilang sahod, pero marami po ang kanilang ambag sa ating pamayanan. Ang maliit na dagdag po para sa kanilang buwan ng sahod ay malaking bagay na para sa kanila at para sa kanilang pamilya. Mabuhay po ang ating mga kawanin sa barangay, mabuhay po ang ating mahal na lungsod. Samuli, maraming salamat po.
Maraming salamat, Pang lungsod na kagawad Elmer Valdemoro. Any other privileged speech? Mr. Secretary?
Reading and approval of the Order of Business.
Counselor Rosales?
Morning, Mr. Chairman. May I move to dispense with the reading of the Order of Business and prior to the approval, move for the inclusion of the following items. Under Special Business and Order, a resolution authored by the Honorable Gil DaGale Abunal Gomez congratulating and commending Lance Maximilian Cruz of St. Joseph School for winning Gold Award in the 2025 Hong Kong International Science Olympiad held last June 14, 2025. Also, under Special Business and Order, a letter from the Honorable City Mayor requesting for the passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter and sign a memorandum of agreement with the Governor Mariano I. Villaferte Community College Tibmanan relative to the deployment of its students as on-the-job trainees with the city government. Under Unfinished Business, Mr. Chairman? The revised proposed ordinance of the Honorable Francisco M. Mendoza establishing the Maugmang Kinabukasan Study Now Pay Later Program for tertiary students of Naga City. Also, under Unfinished Business, a letter from the Chairman of the Committee on Transport addressed to the City Vice Mayor submitting the inventory of Tri-Mobile franchise in Barangay Carolina in relation to the request of certain Tri-Mobile owners for additional franchise. Also, under Unfinished Business, Mr. Chairman, is the comments from the Philippine National Police relative to the proposed ordinance of City Youth Counselor John Sebastian Flores sponsored by this representation, strengthening the implementation of the City Traffic Code, Regulations, and Other Ordinances as may be implemented by the city government. Also, under Unfinished Business, Mr. Chairman, are comments submitted by the Honorable Toto Jude Jokno relative to the proposed ordinance mandating the delivery of excess soil and concrete debris from public infrastructure projects in the city of Naga to designated sites and imposing penalties for violations thereof. Also, under Unfinished Business, are comments from the Honorable Wilfredo Jude Jokno relative to pending matters with the Committee on Transport and a proposed ordinance authorizing disqualified barangay tanods to augment the Public Safety Office as traffic enforcers of the city government. Under Unfinished Business as well, are reports from the Committee on Organizational Development and Review, the Committee on People Empowerment and Good Governance, the Committee on Appropriations, the Committee on Education, the Committee on Consumer Protection, and the Committee on Land Use. Under New Business, a letter from the City Mayor requesting for the passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter and sign an agreement with EC Bus PH relative to the development of the MyNaga app.
Can we transfer that to Special Business or Order?
No objection, Mr. Chairman. You can take it up under Special Business and Order. Also, under New Business, a letter from the City Mayor requesting for the passage of a resolution adopting and approving two resolutions from the City Development Council Executive Committee relative to the repair of the auditorium and comfort rooms of the Jesse M. Robredo Museum and the repair of a multipurpose building located along the Nursery Road of Barangay Pacol.
Again, can we transfer that to SBO?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Let me acknowledge the presence of the once legendary Ariz Makareig.
Chair, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Also, under New Business, is a proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Jude Jokno amending Section 4 of City Ordinance 21-10.
Okay.
Also, under New Business, is a letter from Chief Liga and Vice Officer of Isaro Gaming Corporation relative to the proposed amendment of existing business permit and the city resolution under Isaro Gaming Corporation. Also, under New Business, is the proposed ordinance also from the Honorable Wilfredo Jude Jokno making Section 1 and 2 of City Ordinance Number 91-96. Also, under New Business, the resolution of the Honorable David Anselio declaring the quarter of the city's property along Alketa Highway in Barangay Osasuna. Was to be included in the extended parcel's land designated as property by ST 0506758 in a combined area of 1,522 square meters as dedicated for the specific use of the city. Of the city government. Also, under New Business, is subject matter of privileged speech of the Honorable Elmer Valdemoro regarding the increase of 500 acres across the board in the side of the road by the public and field. And also, as new business, is subject matter of privileged speech of the-
Honorable Jefferson Romeo Felix. Submitting the situation reports of the Sangguniang Kabataan of the city of Naga. Under Other Matters, the Board Resolution copy furnished the Sangguniang Pang lungsod from the Department of Transportation relative to the notice of compliance to the local public transport route plan submitted by the city of Naga. And last, under Other Matters, is a memorandum from the DILG submitting the policy guidelines for the formulation of the local poverty reduction action plans. With the conclusions, Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the Order of Business.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Mr. Secretary?
Order of Business, Special Business or Order, the letter dated August 8, 2025 of the Honorable City Mayor requesting for a resolution to enter into and sign a memorandum of agreement with Dangerous Drugs Board and Sangguniang Kabataan Federation pertaining to partnership for establishment of community-based drug rehab facility, drug abuse prevention education, and advocacy youth hub in the city.
Counselor Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a request from the City Mayor to so that we can pass a resolution authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, Honorable Maria Leonor G. Robredo to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Dangerous Drugs Board and the Sangguniang Kabataan Federation of Naga City for the establishment of and operationalization of a community-based drug rehabilitation facility, also known as the Drug Abuse Prevention Education and Advocacy Youth Hub in Naga City.
Okay, we have the full text of the resolution. Any comment? Yes, Counselor Mendoza?
Just a query, Mr. Chairman. Enot, the hub refers to a facility, a building?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Second question, what is the obligation for the city? Will it require appropriation from the city?
Counselor Felix?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is a facility, Mr. Chairman, and the Dangerous Drugs Board through the Executive Director, Mr. Earl Saavedra, has granted us the amount of 5 million pesos for the establishment of this-
So the city will be financing the construction of the building?
The appropriations, Mr. Chairman, will be coming from the Dangerous Drugs Board.
Ah, the Dangerous Drugs Board. So, any other comment? Counselor Mendoza again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How about the cost of operation? Who will shoulder that? Will that be the one account of the LGO or by the Dangerous Drugs Board?
Again, Counselor Felix?
For the operationalization, Mr. Chairman, it will be a joint management and resource sharing of the Dangerous Drugs Board and the city government of Naga.
Okay, so any other comment? Final motion? Counselor Rosales?
May we know where the facility will be put up?
Yes, Counselor Felix?
Sir Chairman, according to our city mayor and the city assessor, they have identified the location at Balatas Development Complex beside or near or within the compound where the Cesar is located.
Okay, I think all the critical questions have been propounded and answered. You can now proceed to the final motion. Oh, another comment from Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez?
Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman. I saw in one of the paragraphs that interventions are going to be provided. May I just know, Mr. Chairman, who would be in charge of this? As a city, do we have a say on the interventions? Because we already have current efforts, especially on community-based drug rehabilitation.
Counselor Felix?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It will be part of the responsibilities for the operationalization on the part of the city government.
Okay. Again, Counselor Mendoza?
One last, Mr. Chairman. I have no objection to this proposal, provided that the proponent or the executive would prepare a study indicating the cost to the city to operate the facility every year so that it may be included in the annual investment program and in the budget.
Okay. Counselor Felix?
As duly noted, Mr. Chairman, and we will also raise this to the Naga City Dangerous Drugs Board.
Are you now ready to make the final motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Chairman, may I now move that we pass a resolution authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, Honorable Maria Leonor G. Robredo to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Dangerous Drugs Board and the Sangguniang Kabataan Federation of Naga City for the establishment and operationalization of a community-based rehabilitation facility and drug abuse prevention education and advocacy youth hub in Naga City. So I move, Mr. Chairman.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
A letter dated August 8, 2025 of the Honorable City Mayor requesting for a resolution authorizing her to enter into and sign memorandum of agreement with the Department of Health Development pertaining to the grant-
Counselor Dr. Beto Borja, the chairman of the Committee on Health, any reaction?
Mr. Chairman, I think we have to approve the request because the event, for example, not to the index patients.
So can I move now for a resolution, Mr. Chairman?
So the Committee on Health Chairman is saying here that we need to approve the resolution. Any comment from the members of the council?
Motion?
Now, make the final motion?
I move for the passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into memorandum of agreement with the Department of Health, Region 5.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
July 31, 2025, of the Honorable City Mayor requesting for a resolution authorizing the charging against the current appropriation for the office of the city administrator the amount of 106,597 pesos and 60 tabos representing the prorated year-end benefits of the Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro.
Counselor Albios?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The letter of the City Mayor pertains to the year-end bonus and cash gift of the Honorable Elmer S. Valdemoro when he served as the city administrator in the year 2024 in the amount of 106,597 pesos.
So in other words, Counselor Valdemoro still has to receive his bonus?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Attached to the letter is the certification from the Budget Office as to the availability of funds. So may I move that we pass a resolution approving the request of the City Mayor in the amount of 106,597 pesos.
Okay, please make the motion, Counselor Albios.
So, Member of Mr. Chairman, that we approve the request of the City Mayor for the year-end bonus and cash gift of the Honorable Valdemoro in the amount of 106,597 pesos. So move.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? No objection? The motion is approved.
They propose five separate resolutions of the Honorable Elmer S. Baldimoro congratulating and commending certain students of BLICA for winning medals in the World Mathematics Invitational 2025 Final Round held on July 25 to 29, 2025.
Counselor Baldimoro.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Counselor Doc. Albios also submitted the same resolution, so may I move, Mr. Chair, that we co-sponsor the said proposed resolution, commending, congratulating and commending the students of Blessed Lights International Christian Academy. Five separate resolution, Mr. Chair.
Can we do it on joint and collective motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, please move.
So, may I move, Mr. Chair, on joint and collective motion.
They propose resolution of the Honorable JCR Albios congratulating and commending Dr. Neptali Joel Bagadjong Botoro of Barangay Tabuco for placing fifth in the August 2025 Guidance Counselors Computer-Based Licenseur Exam with a rating of 88.50%.
Yes, Counselor Albios.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During the last licensure examination for the Guidance Counselors Computer-Based Examination held last August 6 and 7, resident of Barangay Tabuco, Dr. Neptali Joel Bagadjong Botoro, placed fifth in the National Examination with a rating of 88.55%. So, may I move that we pass a resolution congratulating and commending Dr. Neptali Joel Bagadjong Botoro. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
No objection?
They propose 18 separate resolutions authored by the Honorable JCR Albios, individually congratulating and commending certain students from Naga City for winning medals in the World Mathematics Invitational 2025 Final Round on July 25 to 29.
Counselor Albios.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This representation submitted 18 names for a resolution of commendation for those students who won in the World Mathematics Invitational 2025 Final Round held last July 25, 2029. But considering the Honorable Baldimoro has already expressed the approval of the five names of Blessed Lights International Christian Academy, this representation is moving for the approval of 13 students. Five, I seven from the Naga City Montessori, two from Mindset Matter, two from University de Santa Isabel, and two from the Ateneide Naga University Junior High School. So, joint and collective motion.
Joint and collective motion. Next item, please.
They propose resolution of the Honorable Hilda Gail Abunal Gomez congratulating and commending Lance Maximilian Cruz of Saint Joseph's School for winning gold award in the 2025 Hong Kong International Science Olympiad Final Round last June 14, 2025.
Yes, Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez, we may as well include this in that resolution filed by Counselor Albios.
Mr. Chair, this is a different competition, Mr. Chair.
But he did not win any medal?
He won, Mr. Chair, in a different competition.
Okay. Please proceed with your-
So, this student, Mr. Chair, of Sejo, who, by the name of Lance Maximilian Cruz, won gold award in the 2025 Hong Kong International Science Olympiad, which was held at June 14, 2025. It is just appropriate, Mr. Chair, that we give him the recognition due to him, so I am proposing this resolution congratulating and commending the student Lance Maximilian Cruz from Saint Joseph's School for winning gold award in the 2025 Hong Kong International Science Olympiad. So move, Mr. Chair, on joint and collective motion.
Joint and collective. Next item, please.
The letter dated August 11, 2025, of the Honorable City Mayor, requesting for authority to enter into and sign a memorandum of agreement with the Governor Mariano Villaforte Community College Limanan for deployment of its student as on-the-job trainees with the City Government.
Chairman of the Committee on Education, the Honorable David Casper Nathan Sereo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we pass a resolution authorizing the Mayor to enter to such agreement with Mariano Villaforte Community College Limanan as requested by this City Mayor. So move.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The letter dated August 4, 2025, from the Honorable City Mayor, requesting for authority to enter into and sign the agreement with EC Bus PH Incorporated relative to the development of the Main Naga App. The expected roles and responsibilities of both parties are outlined in the agreement.
Who is the Chairman of the Committee on IT? Yes, Counselor Ariz Magaray.
This is just a preliminary, Mr. Chair, to the development of the Main Naga App. This is an app program to be used with a gadget or a cellphone or a laptop, which contains several services, information, which are in line with our policy on transparency and immediate provision of governmental services. So, the Honorable City Mayor may explore the possibilities and the benefits from this development of this application. So, we respectfully move that the Honorable City Mayor be authorized to enter into this very noble agreement. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The letter dated August 11, 2025, of the Honorable City Mayor, requesting for a resolution adopting and approving Resolution Number 2025-001 for the repair of auditorium comfort room of GMR Museum and Resolution Number 2025-002 on the repair of multipurpose building along Narceery Road in Barangay Pacol. These are CDC Development Council Resolution, Sir Honor.
We will get the stand of the Chairman of the Committee on Appropriations, Counselor Elmer Baldimoro.
Ramang salamat po, ginawang pangulo. Itu po ay patungkol doon sa pinanalunan na ganitimpala ng lokal na gobyerno ng Naga. Sa halagang 2 million pesos, nung tayo po ay nagawa da ng seal of good local governance. And sa ngayon po ay pinopropose ito para sa repair ng auditorium at comfort room ng JCM Robredo Museum. So, with that, Mr. Chair, may I move for passage of a resolution adopting and approving the CDC resolution for the inclusion in the supplemental annual investment program for the calendar year 2025.
Can we do it on joint and collective?
On joint and collective motion, ginawang pangulo.
Joint collective.
Joint collective.
Next item, please.
Another, ang isa pa po nito, Mr. Chair, ay ang pagpapagawa ng repair para sa isang multipurpose building sa Pacol. Itu po 'yung lilipatan ng mga bata sa Naga City Children's Home. So, with the ongoing repair ng Metro Naga Sports Complex, kinakailangan na pong ilipat ang mga bata. So, kinakailangan din po ng repair ng nasabing multipurpose building. So, with that, Mr. Chair, may I move for the adoption and approval of the CDC resolution for the inclusion of the annual investment program for the year 2025.
Again, can we make it on a joint and collective motion?
And finish with this, the Joint Committee of the Committees on Social Welfare and Services and the Committee on Health and Nutrition.
Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez, please.
Mr. Chair, for the Committee on Social Welfare and Services and Health and Nutrition, may I request acknowledgement of this report?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held last August 7. There was a quorum, Mr. Chair. There were two items tabled. The first item was a letter dated July 25, 2025, of the City Mayor requesting for the passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter into and sign a memorandum of agreement with certain private health facilities in Naga City for the extension of health services to indigent Nagenyo residents. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable David Casper Nathan A. Sereo, seconded by Honorable Buenafe and Honorable Baldimoro, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguniang Panglongsood the passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement as presented with the following private hospitals, namely, Naga Imaging Center, Cooperative Doctors Hospital, Universidad de Santa Isabel Health Services Department, and the Bechal Access Health Syndrome, subject to the ratification by the Sangguniang Panglongsood. The committee further resolved to recommend to the Sangguniang Panglongsood the passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter and sign into a memorandum of agreement with Bechal Cardiovascular Diagnostic Center, or BCDC, with an amendment to reflect the policy that assistance shall only be given if the laboratory procedure to be availed of is not available at the Naga City General Hospital, subject to the ratification by the Sangguniang Panglongsood. So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
The next item is a letter dated July 22, 2025, of the Honorable City Mayor, seeking for the passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development Office pertaining to assistance for individuals in crisis situations or AICs financial assistance. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Francisco M. Mendoza, seconded by the Honorable David Casper Nathan Sereo, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguniang Panglongsood the passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare Office pertaining to assistance for individuals in crisis situations, financial assistance. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second?
Second.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That's all for the report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Dr. Gail Abunal Gomez. Next item, please.
The report of the Committee on Public Utilities.
The Committee on Public Utilities headed by the Honorable JCR Albios.
Here, may I request acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Public Utilities.
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held on July 30, 2025, and there was a quorum. Only one item was tackled. The proposed resolution authored by the Honorable David Casper Nathan A. Sereo and City Youth Counselor Patima Yangga, requesting the Metro Naga Water District to resolve within six months the problem on water supply distribution system in the City of Naga and its suburbs. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable David Casper Nathan Sereo, duly seconded by the Honorable Borja, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguniang Panglongsood the passage of a resolution requesting the Metro Naga Water District to resolve within six months the problem in water supply distribution system in the City of Naga and its suburbs. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Next disposition is to resolve further to request the Metro Naga Water District to provide the Sangguniang Panglongsood with periodic reports on the completed and ongoing projects within the City of Naga. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That ends the report, Mr. Chair. Thank you and good morning.
Thank you very much, Counselor Albios. Next item, please.
The report of the Committee on Education.
Committee on Education headed by the Honorable David Nathan Casper Sereo.
From the Committee on Education, one is dated July 31, and another is August 8. May I request acknowledgement of these two reports?
Your reports are duly acknowledged.
Thank you. For the committee hearing held July 31, may I proceed to item number one?
Yes, please.
Thank you. First endorsement dated March 3, a visa honor the City Mayor endorsing the memorandum of agreement between and among the Department of Education Naga City, City Government of Naga, and the eleven research grantees of Special Education Fund for confirmation of authority and ratification of the same. For the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you. On motion of Honorable Baldimoro, duly seconded by Honorable Felix, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguniang Panglongsood Plenary the approval of memorandum of agreement between and among the Department of Education Naga City, City Government of Naga, and research grantees, there are eight grantees, of Special Education Fund, and approved the confirmation of authority and ratification of the same. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
For the second item, proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Jefson Romeo Felix, co-authored by City Councilors Joshua Constantino and co-sponsored by members of the 2025 City Youth Sangguniang Panglongsood, institutionalizing student participation in local education and health governments in Naga City by establishing student representation in the local school board and local health board, forming the Naga City Student Arbitro-Sory Council on Education, strengthening school-to-city consultation mechanism. For the disposition, Mr. Chair, the committee resolved to recommend to the Plenary that the City Mayor, being the chairperson of both the local school board and the local health board, be furnished a copy of the proposed ordinance for her inputs and comments.
Okay, so the City Mayor will be given copies of the inputs?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Para mabasa niya itong proposed legislation, Honorable Felix. Thank you. Third item, letter dated July 22, of the Honorable City Mayor, seeking for the passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter to MOA with University of Nueva Casares pertaining to Partnership for Research, Community Extension, Scholarship and Sustainability Initiatives in Adult and Lifelong Learning. For the disposition, on motion of Honorable Baldimoro, duly seconded by Honorable Felix, the committee resolved to recommend to the Plenary the passage of a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to enter into a MOA with UNC pertaining to Partnership for Research, Community Extension, Scholarships, Sustainability Initiatives, and Adult Lifelong Learning. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Number four, letter dated July 25, of Dr. Magna Conag, Junior President of City College of Naga, addressed to Honorable Sereo, chairperson of Committee on Education pertaining to the recommendations of CCN concerning actions required by City Government, required of the City Government in light of the recent evaluation conducted by the Chad Institutional, Chad Office of Institutional Quality Assurance and Governance. For the disposition-
Yes, please. Yes, please.
The committee resolved to furnish the executive department with a copy of the proposed amendment to ordinance number 2025-011 for the commission inputs. We have yet to receive the comments from the executive department, Mr. Chair, on this matter. I have made the follow-up with Mr. Mercasio, and sabi niya mga tawang pasinang sarung simana.
So they will be furnishing copies of the reports to the office of the city mayor?
Yes. Another disposition, on motion of Honorable Baldimoro, duly seconded by Honorable Felix, the committee resolved to recommend to the planner the declaration of a portion of the property of the city government of Naga located along Almeda Highway, Barangay Concepcion Pequenya, Pequenya, Naga City, for the exclusive use of CNN subject to the submission of the development plan listed area. There is a draft resolution. I was confused kala ku grandi na siya. So ang yam san draft resolution is grandi. I rebentan na lang, but the text is there, Mr. Chair.
We have a draft resolution coming from Counselor Seryo. Reaction from Counselor Elmer Baldimoro?
Just a manifestation, Mr. Chair, pertaining to the address of the Almeda Highway. The larger portion of each of the highway contains the property of Barangay Concepcion Grande, although there are some part in Concepcion Pequenya, but the address is Concepcion Grande. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we will be using Concepcion Grande?
So dyan na tama. Okay, that is the draft.
So we now have the motion coming from?
I move that we pass a resolution declaring the portion of the city acquired property along Almeda Highway in Barangay Concepcion Grande, Naga City, constituting two adjacent parcels of land designated as Lot 3, PISD 05036738, and Lot 2-B, LRA, PISDE 2015000658, Cadastral 290, with a combined area of 12,522 square meters as indicated for the exclusive use of the City College of Naga. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Thank you. Last disposition, I know, last number five item, letter dated July 22 of Ms. Melissa Bubus Assistant School Principal 2, noted by Mr. Bishop Alvarez, the third, Dr. Alvarez, School Principal 4 of Camarisona National High School, pertaining to the work immersion program of said school students as mandated by the Department of Education under RA 1053, also known as Enhanced Basic Education Act of 2013. For the disposition, Mr. Chair, on motion of Honorable Baldimoro, the committee resolved to defer the matter to calendar it for the next committee hearing and to invite representative from the Camarisona National High School. So this is deferred.
Okay, so deferred?
Item 6, privileged speech of this representation regarding the delayed release of City Cola by the city government for its beneficiaries. For the disposition, the committee resolved to defer the matter and to furnish the executive department with a copy of the published speech of Seryo regarding the delayed release of City Cola by the city government for its beneficiaries for her comments.
Deferred?
Yes. Seven, proposed ordinance, further amending ordinance number 2010-63, otherwise known as Naga St. Sari Scholarship Program, as amended by ordinance number 2013-010 by inserting a new section on partnerships, roles, and responsibilities of the partners in amending the funding provision to align with partnership agreements, arrangements. For the disposition, on motion of Honorable Baldimoro, the committee resolved to defer the matter due to the absence of its main proponents and calendar it in the next committee hearing and to invite the City Youth Councilors Kimakosa and Honorable Pakau being the main proponents of the said ordinance.
Okay, again, deferred?
The other report dated August 8, Mr. Chair. Item number one, subject matter of published speech of Honorable Seryo regarding the delayed release of City cost of living allowance. Disposition on motion of, the one presiding was Honorable Baldimoro, I relinquish the role of presiding officer. On motion of Honorable Seryo, duly seconded by Honorable Felix, the committee resolved to request the city mayor's office, budget office, and the local finance committee to identify possible sources to facilitate the grant of the second quarter additional benefits to public school teachers. So move.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mr. Chair, just for the affirmation of everyone, the first quarter cola for depend personnel is already being processed, and I think within this week, released na sa mga teachers. That's why second quarter na post big decisionan.
Okay.
Thank you. Second item, proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Frank Mendoza establishing the Maugbankinabukasan Studi Now Pay Later Program of Naga City. For the disposition, on motion of Honorable Baldimoro, duly seconded by Honorable Felix, the committee resolved to return the proposed ordinance establishing the Maugbankinabukasan Studi Now Pay Later Program of Naga City to its author for the necessary revisions and inclusion of the recommendations made during the committee hearing. So return this to the Honorable Frank. Mr. Chair?
So the ordinance will be returned to the principal author?
Yes, and I think with the Honorable Frank Mendoza have already, ready submitted to the secretariat the revised?
The revised version of the ordinance, okay?
Counselor Mendoza is very quick.
Next item, please.
Third item, letter dated July 29 of Mr. Serron Esuhead submitting the result of their evaluation and verification pertaining to requests for incentives endorsed by hisness Susan Culliano of the Pidnaga. For the disposition, given the favorable endorsement of the Esu Office, on motion of Honorable Baldimoro, duly seconded by Honorable Felix, the committee resolved to recommend to Sangguniang Palungsood to favorably endorse to the Naga City School Board the grant of the incentives requested by the Pidnaga. So move.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Ah, yes, sorry. Counselor Mendoza?
This is not an objection, just a comment, Mr. Chair. The source of the incentive would be coming from the?
SEF.
SEF, Special Education Fund.
Okay.
And the one which has responsibility on how it should be allocated is the local school board. Then naman kay pa magagi sa Sanggunian kung maigigi buong sin da. Baka kay maging president ano eh, so just a note that the local school board can dispense with its own budget without need of clearance from Sanggunian.
Thank you, Counselor Mendoza.
Yes, I agree with Counselor Frank. Pero dahil hinaw sa Sanggunian, as in, dati ng nailaw ka't nagbalik naman sa Tuya, big actionanta.
Anyway, we already approved the resolution.
Okay.
Next item, please.
Letter dated August 4 of the Honorable City Mayor requesting for the passage of a resolution authorizing her to enter into MOA with UNC pertaining to the implementation of the idea to start a project of the city government of Naga. For the disposition, on motion of Honorable Baldimoro, duly seconded by Honorable Felix, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguniang Palungsood the passage of a resolution authorizing the city mayor, Honorable Maria Leonor Robredo, to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with University of Nueva Ecoceres for the implementation of this idea to start a project of the city government of Naga, subject to the ratification of Sangguniang Palungsood. So move.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Finally, may I read it to my seat, Honorable? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Seryo.
The report of the Committee on Youth and Sports Development?
The Committee on Youth and Sports Development headed by the Honorable Counselor Jeff Felix.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I request for the acknowledgement of the report, Mr. Chair?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held last July 31, 2025, and there was no quorum. So may I request, Mr. Chair, that the Sangguniang Palungsood be convened as the committee of the whole?
Motion?
So I move, Mr. Chair.
So we are now the committee of the whole?
Mr. Chair, during this committee hearing, I relinquished the presidership to Honorable Ouying Rosales as he was present on that day. So may now proceed to the first item, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
First item is the proposed ordinance of this representation establishing the Barangay Youth Development Council in Naga City as the grassroots counterpart of the Naga City Council for Youth Development, defining its structure, composition, functions, and coordinated relationship with the Sangguniang Kabataan. May I now proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
This representation, Mr. Chair, requested for the deferment of the matter to give ample time to revise the draft ordinance, the draft ordinance, given that there were comments during the committee hearing, and incorporate some of the suggestions during this committee hearing and call for another committee hearing once revised.
So deferred?
Next item, Mr. Chair, is on the proposed ordinance of this representation, institutionalizing the Katipunan ng Kabataan Standardization Framework in Naga City, establishing city-aligned guidelines, contextualized modalities, and support mechanisms for the conduct of KK assemblies, youth profiling, and participatory consultations in every barangay toward a transparent, inclusive, and data-informed youth governance system. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The proponent of this representation, seconded by Honorable City Youth Counselor Sebastian Flores and the NCPC Youth Sector Representative, Mr. Chan Arrevalo, favorably recommend to the Sangguniang Palungsood as the committee of the whole to pass the ordinance institutionalizing the Katipunan ng Kabataan Standardization Framework in Naga City, establishing city-aligned guidelines, contextualized modalities, and support mechanisms for the conduct of KK assemblies, youth profiling, and participatory consultations in every barangay toward a transparent, inclusive, and data-informed youth governance system. So I move, Mr. Chair.
Before proceeding to the final approval, have you crafted the ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Let me see.
Okay, Mr. Chair. So this ordinance, Mr. Chair, is the Katipunan ng Kabataan. The Katipunan ng Kabataan as defined under the Republic Act 10742 is composed of all Filipino citizens aged 15 to 30 years old who are residents of the barangay and is not merely a structural requirement of the Sangguniang Kabataan system. It is actually a sovereign youth assembly of every barangay empowered by law to participate in governance, deliberate on youth concerns, and hold their elected youth leaders accountable. Enshrined under the RA 10742, as amended, the KK assembly is mandated to be conducted at least twice a year, and it is the primary venue for participatory youth governance, enabling the co-creation of youth plans, review of SK programs and budgets, and the articulation of collective voice of young citizens. So, but, Mr. Chair, what happened was, since 2018, when the first batch of the SK reform, of the Sangguniang Kabataan after the SK reform was enacted, despite its legal significance, the conduct of KK assemblies remains to be inconsistent across the barangays. So in many cases, Mr. Chair, they are reduced to compliance-based activities rather than serving as transformative spaces for genuine youth dialogue and decision-making. So this ordinance, Mr. Chair, introduces the KK standardization framework of Naga City. It establishes city-aligned guidelines to provide clarity, flexibility, and replicable best practices for the effective and inclusive conduct of KK assemblies. Because, Mr. Chair, I visited the KK assemblies of every barangay, and in our terms, Mr. Chair, kumbaga sabog-sabog po ang pagconduct ng KK assemblies. May mga KK assemblies, Mr. Chair, na nagpe-present lang kang accomplishment reports in the but dayman po naghahapot kung ano mga concerns, ano si mga suggestions, and ano si mga challenges na na-experience kang youth sector. Where in fact, ito, Mr. Chair, si pinaka-intent kung tanawig ang KK assembly under RA 10742. But, Mr. Chair, there are also barangays na nagkakandak ng assembly na, typical assembly itong one-venue assembly, Mr. Chair. Kung sa'yo nagpapaapod, tapos yon sa one-venue assembly. Pero ang reality, Mr. Chair, day po nagko-quorum at madalas ang mga assemblies. So that's why, Mr. Chair, we are introducing that we can introduce a mode wherein clustered KK assemblies will be permitted in our city.
Okay, thank you. Any comment from the members of the council? This is the committee of the whole? Any comment? Because the Honorable Felix has come up with an ordinance institutionalizing the Katipunan ng Kabataan Standardization Framework in Naga City, establishing city-aligned guidelines, contextualized modalities, and support mechanisms for the conduct of KK assemblies, youth profiling, and participatory consultation in every barangay toward a transparent, inclusive, and data-informed youth governance system. Any comment? Yes, Counselor Mendoza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Considering that we have not received a copy of that ordinance, may I propose that we defer consideration of the same and may request a hard copy of the same so that we can study it and finally decide next session?
So the members have not been furnished copies of this ordinance?
Not yet. It is not in the email, nor have we received a hard copy.
Okay, I am directing the secretariat to furnish all members of the council copies of this proposed ordinance of the Honorable Felix. So in the meantime, we will defer the approval of this ordinance, yes?
Mr. Chair, I think it was sent last July, during the last week of July, Mr. Chair, prior to the fourth or third regular session, Mr. Chair.
I myself have not received a copy of this ordinance. Counselor Baldimoro?
Mr. Chair, we received a copy of the proposed ordinance during the first hearing of this proposed ordinance.
First reading, yeah.
First hearing?
First reading.
At the first reading of this ordinance?
Yes, Mr. Chair, but we understand the predicament of some members, so we request a temporary deferment of this item and send again a copy of the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Baldimoro. Counselor Ariz Makaraig?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May I just put on record that I received a copy and I'm ready to vote in favor of passing the ordinance, Mr. Chair? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Ariz. But anyway, the general stand at this stage is to defer the approval of this proposed ordinance so that all members of the council can study the underpinnings of the said ordinance, proposed ordinance. Yes, Counselor Nathan Seryo?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Perhaps we can calendar this next session para ma-desisyonan?
Yes.
Meanwhile, mag-provide siguro si Kwan Magirare taan. Day ko sigurado ko nakaresiba ako kayan.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Mendoza?
So it's not to repeat the same, there's a difference between a draft ordinance
there's a difference between a draft ordinance initially submitted and the same ordinance as reported by the committee. Now, while the same was circulated initially, but what we would want is the ordinance arising from the committee hearing.
Yes, I agree with Counselor Mendoza. Counselor Baldimoro was saying that copies were given during the first reading. So it means that the proposed ordinance had not been tackled by the concerned committee. So we will be dealing with this proposed ordinance next session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So that ends my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Jefferson Felix. Next item, please.
The letter dated August 12, 2025, Honorable Frank M. Mendoza, submitting the revised Maugmang Kinabukasan Stadionao Pailitup ordinance for the committee's final review and endorsement.
Counselor Seryo was reporting a few minutes ago that the proposed ordinance was given back to the principal offer.
Yeah, referred to the committee on education.
Counselor Mendoza?
That is my intent, Mr. Chair, to have the document referred to the committee.
Okay, so we will be referring back the document to the committee concerned?
The letter dated August 11, 2025, from Melvin Ramon J. Benafe, as Chairman of the Committee on Transport, submitting the inventory of Tramobil franchise in barangay Carolina.
The Committee on Transport, Chairman Omar Buenafair?
Mr. Chair, this item is pending the Committee on Transport, and we request that this this report be included in the item for inclusion in the unfinished business in the Committee on Transport.
Today?
During our next hearing, Mr. Chair, we will deliberate on this matter because there are pending requests for franchise at the Carolina area. And before we can award those franchises, we need to determine if these previously issued franchises, which were never renewed, are still, the owners of these are still interested to continue with their franchise. Otherwise, we will cancel or terminate their franchise.
So in other words, you are requesting that this be included under?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Under?
Committee on Transport unfinished business deliberations.
The unfinished business of the?
Committee on Transport, the pending unfinished business of the Committee on Transport.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
The letter dated August 8, 2025, from Police Colonel Gilbert Farinas, submitting its comment on the proposed ordinance containing the implementation of the and other ordinance as may be implemented in the city.
Counselor Rosales, what is this?
It's pending with the Committee on Transport, Mr. Chair.
So it's now with the Committee on Transport. Okay, thank you. We will take a break.
and concrete debris from public infra projects.
Counselor Jokno, please.
Mr. Chair, that has been tackled already the other at the last time we had a committee hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Another submission from the Honorable Jokno with respect to the traffic impact assessment.
Again, Counselor Jokno.
May I suggest that that be referred to the appropriate committee.
So we will refer this to the Committee on Transport?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Another submission from the Honorable Jokno containing his comments to the proposed ordinance authorizing qualified barangay tanots to augment public safety office as traffic enforcers.
Again, Counselor Jokno.
Yes, again, Mr. Chair, may that be referred to the...
Committee on Public Safety?
The report of the Committee on Organizational Development and Review.
Committee on Organizational Development and Review, Counselor Gael Abunal Gomez.
Mr. Chair, for the Committee on Organizational Development and Review, may I request acknowledgement of this report?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The hearing was conducted last August 7th, there were... We had a... We did not have a coro, Mr. Chair, so may I request that this... that the plenary be converted into a committee of the whole, so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second, so the committee of the whole.
There were two items discussed, the first is the proposed ordinance authored by the Honorable Ariz Makaraig and City Youth Counselor Yuan Angelo Pacau establishing the Naga City Architects' Office defining its composition, functions, and appropriating funds there for and other related purposes. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
The committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguni Ampang Lumsod and recommend... The committee resolved to defer the matter and recommend returning the proposed ordinance establishing the Naga City's Architects' Office to the proponent so that the necessary revisions can be done, so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
For the second item, the proposed ordinance authored by still the Honorable Ariz Makaraig and City Youth Counselor Yuan Angelo Pacau strengthening the city disaster risk reduction and management framework by restructuring the CDRRMO institutionalizing the local risk reduction and management council, establishing the emergency operations center, and adopting the incident command system and cluster approach as command, control, and coordination system for disaster response operations, management of planned events and exercises in the city of Naga. May I go to the disposition?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chair, the committee resolved to defer consideration of the matter since the proponent himself requested for the presence of the current chief of the CDRRMO, Mr. Reyna Rodriguez, and the past chief, Mr. Allen Riundanga, and the Honorable Melvin Ramon Buenafé who used to be the proponent of this proposed ordinance to be present in the committee hearing, so move, Mr. Chair.
So deferred.
That's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Next item, please.
The report of the Committee on People Empowerment and Good Governance.
The Committee on People Empowerment and Good Governance.
Mr. Chair, may I request acknowledgement of this report from the Committee on People Empowerment and Good Governance?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The hearing was held last August 8th. We did not have a coro, Mr. Chair, so may I request again for the... for this plenary to be converted into a committee of the whole, so move, Mr. Chair.
Any second, any objection, so committee of the whole.
There are two items, there were two items discussed, Mr. Chair. The first is a letter dated July 15, 2025 of Mr. Lori Bell Ainatshor, the NCPC Executive Director endorsing the documents submitted by the Traffic Assistance Group Naga City Incorporated in relation to their application for accreditation for review and approval. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of Honorable Elmer S. Baldimoro, duly seconded by Honorable Jefferson Felix, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguni Ampang Lumsod and recommend the approval of the application for accreditation of the Traffic Assistance Group or tag Naga City Incorporated, so move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Resolved further, Mr. Chair, to direct the CSO desk officer to review the current process for CSO accreditation and formulate a standard application process reflecting the recommendations of the committee to be submitted to the Sangguni Ampang Lumsod for its review and approval, so move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
The second item, Mr. Chair, is a letter dated July 15, 2025, again of Mr. Lori Bell Ainatshor from the NCPC submitting the list of their official representatives to the various standing committees of the 15th Sangguni Ampang Lumsod for consideration. May I go to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Elmer S. Baldimoro, duly seconded by the Honorable Felix, the committee resolved to elevate the matter to the Sangguni Ampang Lumsod and recommend the recognition of the Naga City People's Council sectoral representatives and their official alternates to the standing committees of the 15th Sangguni Ampang Lumsod, so move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Further, Mr. Chair, it is resolved to direct the Naga City People's Council to submit the names of their sectoral representatives, specifically one each from... specifically one each from the PWD, Solo Parent, and Senior Citizen to represent the NCPC in the Committee on Social Development, Mr. Chair. So move.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
That's all for the report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez. Next item, please.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Mendoza.
Just a comment on the previous report on the proposed creation of the City Architects' Office, as well as, uh, creation also of the local Disaster Risk Reduction Management Office. Uh, we now have an engagement with the Development Academy, Academy of the Philippines on, uh, organizational development. Uh, may I propose, Mr. Chair, that proposals for the creation of new positions or new offices be... Okay, should await the result of that engagement. May kawalay taang ko yan and DAP to assist the city government on, on how it can improve its organizational structure. Mas maray na halat tumpasir report ninda before we create new offices.
Reaction from Counselor Gail Abunal Gomez.
Uh, may I ask, therefore, Mr. Chair, the proponent of the, of both ordinances, um, for his reaction, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Counselor Aris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, the comment of the Honorable Frank Mendoza is, um, valid and, uh, agreeable. Um, but instead of, uh, waiting for the result, um, I, this representation will, uh, uh, be proactive and actually take part in that, uh, um, study of the Development Academy, so that they could actually consider the creation of these offices. Because if we will talk about these offices after the study, of course, what will do, what do we expect? They will not be included in the study. So, um, uh, this representation as the proponent of the ordinances together with the Counselor Nathan Serio with respect to the City Architects' Office and with Honorable Counselor Omar Buenafe with respect to the City Disaster Risk Management Office, um, will, uh, take, uh, extra steps in assuring that, uh, the consideration of the creation of these offices be included in the study of the Development Academy of the Philippines. And in view of that, um, uh, committee hearings for these, uh, ordinances will await the result of the...
Thank you, Counselor Aris. Counselor Nathan?
I share the same position.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I understand that, uh, the mayor is conducting a reorganization of the entire, uh, local government unit of Naga and she is getting support from private sectors and from public sectors. So, I commend the principal authors of the various ordinances for, under, for volunteering to be part of the discussion which will be conducted by the, the DAP. When will it start? Counselor Mendoza, do you have the timeframe? But anyway, yes, Counselor Mendoza.
Aye, yel to the recommendation of the good Counselor Aris. Uh, we should not wait. Kung may mga idea kita, then let it be included in the discussion with DAP.
Yes, precisely. That was the reason why I was commending, uh, Counselor Aris, Counselor Nathan, and Counselor Omar for volunteering to join the discussion. Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
The report of the Committee on Appropriations.
The Committee on Appropriation, headed by the Honorable Elmer Baldimoro.
Maraming salamat po, kinu pangulo. Maari na po bang kilalanin ang ulat ng committee sa paglalaan ng mundo?
Inikilala ko po ang iyong, uh, committee report.
Maraming salamat po. Ang pag dinig ay ginanap kahapon na may sapat na bilang ng mga miyembro. Isang paksa lang po ang napag-usapan. Ita po ay ang letter dated August 4, 2025 of Mr. Reyno Rodriguez, OIC, CDRRMO, requesting the passage of an ordinance, reprogramming the unexpended balance of the 2025 Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund in its related programs. Maari na po bang dumiretsos sa disposition?
Sige po, dumiretsok na.
On motion of Honorable Jesse R. Albios, duly seconded by Honorable Gomez, the committee resolved to defer consideration of the matter and return the request to the City Disaster Risk Reduction Management Office and City Disaster Risk Reduction Management Council for the necessary revision.
So ipinagliliban?
Opo, and akin pong minumungkahe ang pagliliban ng nasabing paksa.
Ipinagliliban natin ang diskusyon ng nasabing paksa.
Maraming salamat po, jan po nagtatapos ang aking ulat.
Pinapahirapan mo ako. Next item, please. Yes, Counselor Mendoza.
Ipagpapatuloy ko 'yung usapan. Uh, just a comment, Mr. Chair. Any changes in the, uh, usage of the Local Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Fund should be reflected in an amendment or, okay, supplemental annual investment program.
Okay, noted. Next item, please.
The report of the Committee on Consumers' Protection.
The Committee on Consumer Protection, headed by Counselor Jesse Albios.
Request acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Consumer Protection.
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held on August 8, 2025, and there was no quorum. May I request that this body be converted into a Committee of the Whole?
Okay. The entire body is now converted into the Committee of the Whole?
Only one item was tackled. Email dated July 28, 2025, from Michael Bando, bringing to the attention the violation of Crown Park Restaurant SM Branch on the one-half cup rice ordinance. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Borja, duly seconded by Honorable Jokno, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunang Palongsod to direct the City Legal Office to send a letter of reprimand addressed to Crown Park Restaurant for its first violation of ordinance number 2023-024, also known as the one-half cup rice ordinance. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Yes, Counselor Aris.
Um, may, I, I just have a query before I, I formally object.
What is your query?
Uh, have we observed due process in, uh, reprimand, reprimanding, sending a letter of reprimand to Crown Park, uh, Mr. Chair? Because reprimand is already a form of, uh...
Punishment, sort of? Um... It's already a form of penalty?
I mean, I mean to say, Mr. Chair, have we invited a representative from Crown Park?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The manager of Crown Park Central and Crown Park SM were present during the committee hearing.
And they admitted, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, and in fact, they have apologized to the, uh, complainant.
Uh, that's what I missed from escaping the...
So you are objecting?
I'm no, no longer objecting, uh, with that, uh...
Okay, okay, so the motion is...
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Approved.
That ends the report, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Albios. Next item, please, Mr. Secretary.
The report of the Committee on Land Use.
Committee on Land Use, again headed by the Honorable Jesse Albios.
Mr. Chair, may I request acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Land Use?
Your report is duly acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held on July 30, 2025, and there was a quorum. Uh, the first item is letter dated March 20, 2025 of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation of the documents submitted by Ms. Cherry Lynn Zamora Saludo pertaining to her application for zoning of a parcel of land located at Barangay Balatas, Naga City, from residential to commercial use.
Barangay Dayandang?
What was written, Mr. Chair, is Barangay Dayandang, but during the committee hearing, Purong Barangay Ferdinand de Hita mentioned that it is part of Barangay Balatas.
Okay.
And then to that is a letter dated May 19, 2025, signed by certain residents of Catmon Street, Magsesai Avenue, Naga City, pertaining to their opposition to the application for the reclassification of a parcel of land situated at Barangay Balatas, Naga City, from residential to commercial for the proposed Zelda Trese and El Chico Smokehouse. Also a letter dated May 28, 2025, of Pichi I David, on behalf of the concerned residents of Catmon 1, Magsesai Avenue, Naga City, appealing against the reclassification of residential area to commercial area as applied for by Zelda Trese Bar and Bejoke. Also a letter dated June 9, 2025, of Cherry Lynn Zay Salodo, owner of El Chico Smokehouse and Zelda Trese Tresu Bar, located in Barangay Balatas, Naga City, pertaining to her application for zoning of the property where business is situated. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Considering that all the documentary requirements are complete and in order, and with the interposed objection from the adjacent property owners already addressed with assurance that there will be no outside band or bar and no loud noise, especially during nighttime, and with a further installation of the soundproofing, on motion of the Honorable Nathan Serio, seconded by Engineer Herlyn de los Reyes Amparo Bergada Bergara, CYO Honorable Chloe Gail Paco, City Youth Counselor Patty Mayanga, City Youth Counselor Yuan Angelo Pakau, City Youth Counselor Gianmarco Frances, and City Youth Counselor China Jean Soriano. The committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunang Palongsod to pass an ordinance amending City Ordinance Number 20071, approving the application of Ms. Cherry Lynn Zamora Saludo for zoning of a parcel of residential lot located at Barangay Balatas, Naga City, from residential zone to commercial zone, which is the site of the proposed Zelda Trese and El Chico Smokehouse, subject to compliance with the concerns raised during the committee hearing. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second. Counselor Rosales?
Just a query, Mr. Chairman. May we know the location in Barangay Balatas?
Mr. Chair, the location of these, um, proposed business establishments are right after the Dayandang Bridge sa may going to Balatas.
Okay. Another query coming from Counselor Mendoza.
Also clarification, Mr. Chair. Does, uh, rezoning mean reclassification?
Yes, a reclass, rezoning of parcel of residential to commercial.
Uh, ang, it, it, it has been a practice, Mr. Chair, that we are reclassifying, uh, lands by lot when we are supposed to reclassify by area. Uh, nagkakagam problema talag, talaga kung, alibawa, pigreclassify itong sarong lotay sa tao kong residential, ginibong commercial. Mareklamo talaga si mga residential areas. Sa linggo, ang proper is, uh, we, we reclassify by area para maiwasan itong nagitaray taid na may opposing uses. At any rate, it's just an observation, Mr. Chair. Siguro, we can review our practice to make sure na when we, uh, rezon or reclassify, it should be by area rather than by lot.
I think the observation made by the Honorable Mendoza is well taken.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this...
Any, uh, reaction from the chairman of the Committee on Land Use?
Yes, Mr. Chair, this representation concur with the observation of the Honorable Mendoza. And perhaps, uh, in the next weeks or months, we can proceed with a review of those areas which were, which are being recommended by the City Planning Development Office for rezoning or reclassification by area, not by, by lot.
Okay. So the motion again?
The motion is to pass an ordinance amending City Ordinance Number 20071, approving the application of Ms. Cherry Lynn Zamora Saludo for zoning parcel of residential lot located at Barangay Balatas from residential to commercial zone. So move.
Any second.
I second, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item number two is letter dated June 25, 2025 of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Mr. Richard Tiro Rocha, Vice President for Operations of LYRR Realty Development Corporation, relative to their application for preliminary approval and locational clearance for the proposed Villia Obiedo Phase 2 located at Barangay Kararayan, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Considering that all the documentary requirements are complete and in order, on motion of the Honorable Nathan Serio, seconded by Honorable Alan Reyes Makaraig, Engineer Herlyn de los Reyes Amparo Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Soriano, Pakau, and Frances, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunang Palongsod to pass a resolution approving the application of Mr. Richard Tirocha, Vice President of Operations of LYRR Realty Development Corporation, for preliminary approval and locational clearance of the proposed Villia Obiedo Phase 2 located at Barangay Kararayan, Naga City, provided that flood mitigating measures are employed or incorporated in the development. So move, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? Objection? Counselor Mendoza?
Uh, it's not an objection, Mr. Chair, just a comment again. Uh, garo may creek or river sa likod kayan? Or adjacent to the property?
May. We have, uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Aris.
Um, we have, uh, verified from the plans and actually, we were concerned as Honorable Mendoza is concerned about the waterways, but actually, there's none. Uh, the waterway is way, way back at the back of the subdivision, which is far from the development. And this development is actually just around 2,000 square meters.
Yes.
Barely. Um, so we just, uh, added a condition that flood mitigating measures be observed, uh, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. So the concern raised by Counselor Mendoza has been addressed?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you. So, again, the motion? Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item number three, letter dated July 14, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office reendorsing for approval a list of applications that were previously approved by the Sanggunang Palongsod but were not issued certifications promptly by the CPDO and applications already submitted to the Sanggunang Palongsod. So item 3.1 is letter dated September 12, 2024 of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Ms. Maria Lordes Navera, attorney-in-fact of Nia R. 5 Village Subdivision located at Barangay Concepcion Pequena, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Considering that all the documentary requirements are complete and in order and that a resolution was already passed on the matter approving this application through Sanggunang Palongsod Resolution Number 2025-132, adopted on March 25, 2025, on motion of the Honorable Nathan Serio as seconded by Honorable Alan Reyes Makaraig, Engineer Herlyn de los Reyes Amparo Bergada, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pakau, Frances, and Soriano. The committee resolved to recommend to the Sanggunang Palongsod to authorize the City Planning and Development Office to change the signatories to the present administration on all the certifications they are about to issue on this application without prejudice to their compliance of all the concerns. on this application without prejudice to their compliance of all the concerns raised during the committee hearing. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item 3.2 is letter dated March 4, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Engineer John Paulo Pablo, Product Development Vehicle of Golden Bria Holdings Incorporated, relative to their application for preliminary approval and locational clearance of the proposed Golden Haven Memorial Parks Incorporated located at Barangay Kararayan, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Considering that all the documentary requirements are complete and in order, and that a resolution was already passed on the matter approving the application, on motion of the Honorable Nathan Seryo, seconded by Honorable Alan Reyes Macaraig, Engineer de los Reyes, Amparo Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood to authorize the City Planning and Development Office to change the secretaries to the present administration on all the certifications they are about to issue on this application without prejudice of compliance of all the concerns raised during the committee hearing. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item 3.3 is letter dated April 15, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Engineer Rolando Campillos, HSDO Head, pertaining to their application for preliminary approval and locational clearance for the proposed Small Vill Subdivision at Barangay Dal Rosario, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Considering that all the documentary requirements are complete and in order, and that a resolution was already passed on the matter approving this application through Sangkunang Palungsood Resolution Number 2025-209, adopted on May 5, 2025, on motion of the Honorable Nathan Seryo, seconded by Honorable Macaraig, Engineer de los Reyes, Amparo Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood to authorize the City Planning and Development Office to change the secretaries to the present administration on all the certifications they are about to issue on this application without prejudice to their compliance of all the concerns raised during the committee hearing. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item 3.4, letter dated April 15, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Ms. Joan Bolano Binondo in connection with her application for a special use permit for the proposed Habibi Resto Bar at Barangay Tarayangulo, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Nathan Seryo, seconded by Honorable Alan Reyes Macaraig, Engineer de los Reyes, Amparo Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood to defer consideration of the matter and on the next committee hearing to invite the homeowners and residents within the area that can be adversely affected by the said establishment as well as Punong barangay available. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
So deferred.
Item 3.5, letter dated May 16, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their supplemental evaluation and the recommendation for approval on the application of Ms. Aslay Nicole Pimpolio for a temporary use permit for the proposed Improvement Renovation of Liquid Packaging Corporation located at RRMDC Building, Zone 5, Barangay Balatas, Naga City. Attached also is a letter dated April 28, 2025 of Ms. Aslay Nicole Pimpelio, authorized representative of Liquid Packaging Corporating, submitting the certificate of non-coverage issued by the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Environment Management Bureau as required by the Committee on Land Use in connection with their application for a temporary use permit. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Nathan Seryo, seconded by Honorable Macaraig, Engineer de los Reyes, Amparo Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood to pass a resolution approving the application of Ms. Aslay Nicole Pimpolio for a temporary use permit on an annual basis and may be renewed from year to year upon satisfactory showing of compliance with all the conditions imposed by the ordinance and permit for a minimum period of five years for the proposed Improvement Renovation of Liquid Packaging Corporation located at RRMDC Building, Zone 5, Barangay Balatas, in Naga City. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Item 3.6, letter dated February 13, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on documents submitted by Bernie Andes, pertaining to his application for zoning of a parcel of land situated at Barangay Pacol, Naga City, from non-agricultural land into commercial use. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Nathan Seryo, seconded by Honorable Macaraig, Engineer de los Reyes, Ms. Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood to defer consideration of the matter and request Attorney Norman Barrosa to submit his opposition in writing within 10 days upon receipt per ob. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Deferred.
Item 3.7, letter dated May 15, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Dr. Renaldo Carisosa for zoning of a parcel of residential land located at Barangay Concepcion Pequena, Naga City, into commercial use. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Nathan Seryo, seconded by Honorable Macaraig, Engineer de los Reyes, Ms. Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood for the scheduling of a public hearing on the matter as required under the existing city ordinance. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any objection?
May I recommend, Mr. Chair, that a committee hearing be held on August 27?
August 27?
So we have a two weeks to disseminate the conduct of a public hearing.
So that will be held on August 27? Mr. Secretary, kindly take note. Thank you.
1:00 P.M.
At 1:00 P.M.
Item 3.8, letter May 5, 2025, the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Mr. Noel Noble Pransyah for zoning of a parcel of land located at Barangay Balatas, Naga City, from high-density residential zone into commercial use. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Nathan Seryo, seconded by Honorable Macaraig, Engineer de los Reyes, Ms. Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood for the scheduling of a public hearing on the matter as required under the existing city ordinance. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
This matter will be also tackled during the public hearing to be scheduled on August 27.
Mr. Secretary, please take note. What time?
1:00 P.M.
1:00 P.M.
Furthermore, the Honorable Macaraig added that without prejudice to the imposition of the corresponding penalty to the applicant as manifested by the CPDO.
Okay.
Item 3.9 is letter dated May 9, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Mr. Aldrin Bichara for zoning of a parcel of land located at Barangay Tinago, Naga City, from highly-density residential zone into commercial use. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Nathan Seryo, seconded by Honorable Macaraig, Engineer de los Reyes, Ms. Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood for the scheduling of a public hearing on the matter as required under the existing city ordinance without prejudice to the imposition of penalty since a structure was already constructed in the area. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any objection?
This matter will also be included in the public hearing to be conducted on August 27. Item 3.10, letter dated March 18, 2025, of the City Planning and Development Office submitting their technical evaluation on the documents submitted by Engineer Angel T. Formalejo, pertaining to his application for a temporary use permit of the proposed shooting range to be located at Sitio Almeda, Barangay Pacol, Naga City. May I proceed to the disposition, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
On motion of the Honorable Alan Reyes Macaraig, seconded by Honorable Seryo, Engineer de los Reyes, Ms. Bergara, City Youth Counselors Paco, Yangga, Pacau, Frances, and Soriano, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangkunang Palungsood to defer consideration of the matter and direct the applicants to comply with the requirements under the Philippine National Police Circular Number 14 on the regulations governing the operations of a shooting range. Sumo, Mr. Chair.
Any second? Any second to the motion of the Honorable Albius?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Deferred.
That ends the report, Mr. Chair. Thank you and good morning.
Thank you very much, Counselor Albius. Next item, please.
New business, the undated letter from Montuville Homeowners Association taking classification and the status of the property they currently occupying in Zone 4, Situban San Rafael Kararayan.
Committee on Housing and Settlements.
The letter dated August 5, 2025, by Engineer Elmer T. Algu, acting city engineer, submitting the list of identified road obstructions in various areas of the city.
Committee on Public Safety.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Hill Jesusales mandating the registration and vaccination of all canine and feline pets in Naga City, promulgating policies and measures to promote responsible pet ownership, the prevention and control of rabies and providing penalty.
Committee on Public Safety.
The letter dated July 29, 2025, from Mr. Florentino T. Mongoso Jr., MNWD General Manager, inquiring about the status of road right-of-way and certain locations in Barangay Carolina.
Committee on Housing and Settlements.
The proposed ordinance of Honorable Vito C. Borja II, amending Section 5 of Ordinance Number 28 and the 018 for the towing and expanded wheel clamp ordinance by designating the Naga City People's Small Parking Spaces along J. Hernandez Avenue as vendors' area from 5:00 P.M. to 1:00 or to 10:00 P.M.
Committee on Market Affairs. Yes, Counselor Baldimoro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the indulgence of the committee on the rules and with the presence of Mr. Mon Florendo, Mr. Claro Alfonso, and Mr. Rene Gumba, could we transfer this item to the Special Business or Order?
Any objection? Hearing none, the motion is approved. We will be transferring item number five of the new business to the Special Business or Order. Is that correct? Okay. So again, we wish to acknowledge the presence here of Mon Florendo, Rene Gumba.
I move to suspend the rules. And let them.
Yes, the rules are suspended.
Good noon po, vice and honorable members of the Sangkunang Palungsood.
Good morning.
Good morning po. I was tasked by the city mayor to lead the task force on safe, walkable, and accessible sidewalk in the executive order he issued, she issued in July 10. And we were given the initial deadline of one month to be able to jumpstart the clearing of the sidewalk. And as we all know, itong sabi ko, is planat na pakaraing na iti pong sa may J. Mark Coliseum, si mga vendors na ayos na, siring man po on the process po itong enforcement team diyan po sa may Bicol Medical Center. And luluhi-luhay mina po sa centro. And to start making na maayos po ang centro, ito po bagan perennial na problema sa Corner Abelia and J. Hernandez, ito mga vendor, which had long been a problem. We are not proposing to relocate them with the blessing of our city mayor. Kaya po nagsabi siya na i-propose ngayna ordinance, na i-transfer nasinda dumang po sa parking area. So we are seeking a partial withdrawal of the parking as stated in the towing ordinance, starting at 5:00 o'clock up to 10:00 P.M. Para po itong gabus na mga vendor, maibugtak tapo lumang. We already, it had already been endorsed by the task force in its July 31 meeting and also endorsed by the Market Awards Committee in its July 30 meeting. So, kaya po nagsurta kami, pinasurta po kami ni Mam Lenny. And this is the reason why we are here. Yar po ang sumuyang task force members.
Yeah, I also wish to acknowledge the presence again, Claro Alfonso and Talley Pabines. Yes, Counselor Seryo?
Mr. Chair, just a query. Arin tabing parking space ang gagamit on relocation side, kam mga vendors?
Ito po tabing sa likod ng market side, sa J. Hernando side. Ano po bagay, kung atubang ka sa People's Mall, 'yung ka dumang sa Balion Tinampu. On the right side, ito pong motorcycle parking. On the left side, ito pong sa four-wheels na po. Pero kung mariri sa punindo, as early as mga 5:00, nakiclear na po ito. Ang problema po, as early as 3:00 and 4:00, nagpo-possession namang si mga vendors dumang sa ano, sa Corner Abelia up to LCC. Talaga pong terrible po ang sitwasyon dumang.
Again, Counselor Seryo and then Counselor Ariz.
Yes, Palu, apo. Itong gabus na parking space na'to, nakataid kang market building, gabus ito gagamit on para sa relocation side?
Ipo, we are offering po itong riverside for the motorcycle parking and also the upper floor. Ito pong roof deck. Saka po ito mga four-wheels, kung talagang ma-parks in the, available namang po itong itaas at 5:00 o'clock. Makakapark na po sinda duman.
Counselor Macaraig, do you have any comment?
My concern, Mr. Chair, is about traffic. Although I have no objection to the, in principle, to allowing these vendors to occupy, but just to make sure that we will not be mabigla, mabigla kanding move na ini, especially with the PSO. What is the impact of this move to the traffic situation in that area? I believe that should come from the CPDO, that they should at least have a supporting document to prove that maybe minimal impact on traffic since we will open at 5:00 o'clock up to 10:00 P.M. 5:00 is rush hour. And we believe that under this administration, we are under, we should be evidence-based governance. So only on the issue of traffic mitigation or any assessment made by the CPDO?
Yes, I fully agree with Counselor Ariz Macaraig. And what is the reaction coming from Mr. Ramon Florendo?
Before I give the floor to Sir Rene and Colonel Ayos of the Traffic Bureau, the road right-of-way po of Igualdad is 13.1 meters. The road right-of-way po of Igualdad is 13.1 meters. Ito pong width, kantinampo. Ito pong presentinong occupying in parking is almost 3... 3 meters. Uh... Ipo yan so... the same area pong ioccupying ng, uh... uh... mga vendors. So we believe that, uh... the imanggayo maapektaran. Uh... And ang 5 o'clock po, totoo, medyo rush hour pa yan. Pero we're giving, uh... a little time dumansan mga nagpark, uh... probably 5:00 or 5:15 or 5:30. Luwah-luhay namang pong ma-position si mga vendors na. Uh... Ta' kung medyo banggi na po, ang perming rason ka mga vendors, ano pa maningisir kami mabakalan? So... Uh... So para ma... Niya, kamong rason, ma-compromise kita na consultation na po ako sa Namasped.
So you are saying that, uh... there will be no, um... if... effect on the traffic, uh... scheme there? That the traffic will be as normal as possible?
Uh... To my understanding po tabi, yes, uh... Vice, I do not know whether, uh... Sir Rene of PSO and, uh... Colonel Layosa would, uh... would wish to add up?
Can we get the position of the head of the Public Safety Office, Mr. Rene Gumba? Uh... Because this, uh... position taken by the Honorable Ariz Makaraig is really very important.
Mr. Chair, the consideration is that at present, some mga vendors po yaon sa tinampo. The option that is being presented is that there'll be outside the road right-of-way. So in general, it will lessen the impact of the obstructions, uh... mitigating the obstructions on the road, which we are experiencing every day sa J. Hernandez. Pun po dumansan sa kanto kang Abelia. Abut na yan dumansan may market area.
So in other words, there will be no traffic problem?
If that... The proposal is taken as it is, outside the road right-of-way, Mr. Chair. Ilalaw na po sinda dumansan may area kang market. Itong ginagamit niya na parking area kang motorcycles.
Yeah, that is the proposal.
Vehicles can flow freely already.
Yes, Counselor Ariz. And then Counselor Mendoza?
Uh... With all due respect, um... Mr. Chair, um... McDonald's Jollibee are also outside the road right-of-way, but they cause so much traffic. Uh... So we cannot accept this representation, cannot accept that just because it is outside the road right-of-way, it has no traffic impact. So what... What I mean to say is that, can we have a pa... Can we have it on paper? Somebody signs it that there will be minimal disturbance to or aggravation to traffic so that when the time comes, that traffic actually aggravated? We can call that person who signed that document to saying that no traffic will be aggravated? Because the public will blame us for putting at, uh... up that, uh... area without any study. Um... We are not against the proposal, but just, uh... We just want to make sure that indeed there's no minimal impact to traffic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh... Counselor Mendoza?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several questions. But pero before that, let me just say na, iyang pong porusun kang Igualdad, from, uh... Abelia up to Samora Underpass. Sangun yan, talaga traffic na. Pagma... Pagka-orasning rush hour, I think we should always expect na may traffic dyan. So... Itong worry na kunsekaling mag-relocate, magkakatraffic, and reality, tingun niya palang may traffic na siya. Uh... To my questions, uh... Mr. Chair. Number one, nakaulay si mga paratinda dumansan sa public market as to the competition that those vendors would afford or would give them? Number two, sign maatubang si tindahan sa tinampo o dumansan sa market building? Number three... Or is it number three? Ah, then I repeat, Mr. Chair, just the first two questions.
Two questions? And that will be answered by the Market Superintendent, uh... Ramon Florendo?
Uh... With due respect, Counselor, uh... Frank Mendoza. Uh... We have already, uh... held the meeting with the President of Namasped last July 15. Ma-mapunga 'yung reaksyon. And then July 17, I held, uh... May midterm sectoral assembly po kami. Uh... Kinanda ko na sa Pabenas, sa third floor yan, tapo sa sari-sari maritata sa second floor. May mapunga 'yung violent reaksyon. Uh... Dahil, uh... At 5, nagpo-puna namang po sida magsarara ng, uh... tindahan. As far as the vendors po, nagpaupod na po si Sir Tali ng pamiting po digdi impact. Uh... Ang ginibumi po, actual talagang, uh... survey, pigre-ritrato mina muna. Ang nangyari po, pag pinapod mo na sinda ng meeting, limang vendors sana, pag nagpapod ka ng meeting, maabot 15. And true to what happened, kaito pong, uh... Piggy-profile me, 78 sana, ka nagpapod na ng meeting, 131 plus na. Ta' pigre-listahan na si mga pinsan, so mga pamangkin, ano. So... This will compound po if we are not able to present a concrete solution. Ang sabi ni Mam Lenny, win-win nga 'yan mon. Makitanghali aning hanapbuhay, pero iconsider to itong mga sektor na naapektaran, especially the motorists and risk kaitong sa tinampo. Tangun yan po, ang nangyari, sa market side, igwanin parking, ang mga vendors po yaon sa tinampo opposite dumansan sidewalk and saka itong parte na katong road right-of-way. Uh... Iyan po ang sarong sa mga mayor na kausanin traffic. So we're doing away with the opposite side, maklear na ito, digdi nalang po sinda sa ano, sa parking area. Uh... That probably might be the win-win solution. And then we are requesting the vendors, sa talagang daykong magposition na las tres. Then induikadina yang sa indong mga karita, kinakari... Kinakadina na po kay dumansan may party ng, uh... sa balyo. Uh... Pati si Fire Hydrant pigkadinahan na, niya ko. Kaya, uh... Iyan po ang trabaho niyan, task force, to be able to clear the sidewalk para magisang safe, walkable na.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Florendo. Counselor Nathan Seryo?
Kasabot ko. Big meeting, big consultas sa mga piktadong vendors, tamapuang. Salamat. Ngunyan, si gagamit on alilipatanin, itong dating pigpaparkingan kan mga motor siklo. Ano tabi ang protection sa mga sipri maatracyan ng mga para bakal dumang? Ano protection sa mga buyers na desinda masagi ng auto? O kaya mga vehicle ng aral?
We will be providing protective barriers po tabi, Counselor Chair. Uh... Apart from the yellow tape, dapat itong permanent na barrier, tangarig da isinda ma... Opo, masagi.
Counselor Ariz?
Uh... Mr. Chair, can we have a dry run of this first before we approve the ordinance? So that the traffic, uh... Because it's... It seems that there's no actual study on the traffic effect of this, uh... measure. And, um... Can we have it on a dry run first so that we can have a report about the traffics and the mitigation required, uh... of the PSO for the containment of traffic, safety of the people, of the buyers, of the consumers?
When can we conduct the dry run?
As soon as possible, Your Honor, and as soon... As long as they require so that they could produce a traffic assessment, uh...
I agree with, uh... Counselor Ariz Makaraig. Can you do it, Moon?
Yes, Your Honor.
Uh... With the...
Can we request at least on a two weeks?
Support of the PSO? That, uh... We conduct, uh... a test, a dry run? For how many days? Counselor Ariz? Three day?
Two weeks, uh... Mr. Chair.
Two weeks? Okay.
As requested by, uh... Mr. Florendo.
So we will be conducting a dry run for two weeks to determine the impact of this move to the traffic situation in the area. Counselor Rosales?
Uh... Just additional suggestion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, please.
Uh... May I suggest to the author to... make a separate ordinance pertaining to the regulation of the ambulance vendors? Because the proposed ordinance pertains to the amendment of the towing and expanded wheel clamp ordinance, yet we are talking about regulating the ambulance vendors.
Yes.
Perhaps we can make it a distinct ordinance, regulating the ambulance vendors thereat, uh... perhaps imposing penalties for their violations like as mentioned, they are already setting up earlier than as, uh...
Okay. So reaction from Counselor Bora? That you should come up with a separate ordinance for the ambulance vendors?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Separate, uh... ordinance for the vendors and then this one for the...
And this will be based on the results of the...
After the dry run.
Uh... Dry run?
Yes.
Will be... Which will be conducted for two weeks, okay?
Yes, sir.
Reaction? Counselor Baldimoro and Counselor Gail Abonal Gomez? Task Force Baldimoro?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh... Habot lang po, Mr. Chair. Uh... Sa irisain na vendor, itong ililipat dumansan sa, uh... proposed area? And second, what about itong mga vendor dumansan sa opposite side? Ito pong, uh... Sa atubang katung, napag... Paghahapon po baga, Mr. Chair, dumansan may parte kang, uh... LCC? And itong sa side na'to, may mga vendor na. What will happen to them?
Yes, Mr. Florendo?
Actually po, Counselor, iu-una po itong may ilipat. Ito pong yaon sa baga sa corner kang Abelia. Plus itong yaon sa may side kang LCC. Ito na karilin niya po dumang. Uh... Dakulong po ito, mga 78 po ito. Ito po ang ihuhubutan po dumansan sa market side.
Counselor Gail Abonal Gomez?
Yes, uh... Mr. Chair, I share the same thoughts with the Honorable Rosales. Uh... The subject matter of the 2018 ordinance is on vehicles. So separate the, uh... policy for ambulance vendors. However, Mr. Chair, um... we request the author to also review existing policies for our ambulance vendors as there might be existing policies already. We might just need to amend some, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So Counselor Nathan Seryo?
Na nagwang-two week, uh... dry run, ka ning kuwan na 'yun, plano. Pero pag decision ang tanan niyan na itong parkingan, gamit on na, tangarig ba mangyari itong dry run ito. Gamit on na para ang relocation site. Igo dapat kitang malinaw decision.
So there was this motion to conduct, uh...
Dry run, two week dry run.
For two weeks?
Yes.
Oh, any second? Any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. And then you are again coming up with another motion?
For the use of that parking space as relocation, temporary relocation site. Temporary pa kasi, hindi pa man ordinance.
Any second? Counselor Mendoza?
Uh... It looks like, uh... the use of that parking space as vending area is already included in the authorization for the dry run. Ta' deman maka-dry run kung yaon pa si parking area.
Yes, Counselor Seryo?
Rumpor, kunyan ibang interpretation.
Okay, so your motion is still, uh...
It has been seconded.
Any second? No objection? Thank you. So the rules are presumed?
Salamat po.
The letter dated August 8, 2025, of Lino Licop and Dilya Licop, seeking consideration for the renewal of the Tramobile franchise.
Committee on Transport?
The undated letter of Nerissa Panaraag of Calawag, pertaining to her complaint against certain business outfit
seeking reconsideration for the extension of the validity of the joint venture agreement.
Committee on Consumer Protection?
The ordinance number 2025-01 of Barangay Pacoal, establishing the protection, conservation, and rehabilitation of rivers and waterways in Barangay Pacoal.
Committee on Laws and Ordinances?
The letter dated August 4, 2025, from Mr. Eduardo Rivera, President and CEO, Disruptive Waste to Energy Technologies, seeking reconsideration for the extension of the validity of the joint venture agreement.
Committee on Environment and Energy?
The proposed ordinance of the honorable will predutude Jokno, amending section.
Committee on Environment?
The letter dated August 8, 2025, from Isaro Gaming Corporation, requesting to amend business permit and.
Games and amusement.
The proposed ordinance of honorable Jokno, amending section 1 and 2 of City Ordinance 91-096.
Committee on Environment?
The proposed resolution of the honorable Nathan Seryo declaring the portion of the city acquired property and almeda.
Yes, noted?
The proposed ordinance of honorable Elmer Esbaldimoro granting the increase of 500 pesos across the board in the stipend of all barangay volunteer workers in the city. The letter dated August 12, 2025, from the Office of the SK Federation President, Transmital of Naga City Situation Reports.
Yes, Counselor Jeff Felix?
May I request, Mr. Chair, that this matter be referred to the Committee on Youth and Sports?
Okay. Yes, Counselor Albios?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Earlier during the report of the Committee on Land Use, this representation mentioned that the public hearing be held on August 27.
Yes.
That's a Wednesday. When I verify the schedule of the Committee on Land Use, it's Thursday at 1:00 PM. So, may I move that the public hearing be held on August 28 at 1:00 PM?
Okay, please take note. Instead of August 27, it should be on August 28. Next item, please. Counselor Bora? Yes, the dry run. My goodness, you did not tell us about that. So, Counselor Ariz?
May I propose if two days from now? Two days from now? Eighteen?
August 18? For two weeks? Eighteen for two weeks, that will be, that will end? So, from August 18 to August 25, ano?
Two weeks?
Eighteen to 25? To September 1? September 1? August 18 to September 1 will be the dry run. So, please make the motion to make that the dry run will be.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that the dry run will be conducted on, from August 18 to September 1?
Any? Yes, Counselor Baldimoro?
Could we consider the dry run until only August 31 on Sunday? Since it begin on Monday on August 18?
I am afraid that we will be in cursing, yes? So, up to August 31?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I confirm with the suggestion of Counselor.
Any second? Any objection? So, the motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just a query.
Yes, Counselor Mendoza?
What would happen after the dry run? Would vendors go back to their previous places and the motorcycle would return to the parking area? Or the same, status quo?
Counselor Ariz?
The, the, first, the Mr. Florendo and Mr. Gumba can actually make a shorter dry run? Although the allowed dry run is up to two weeks, 31? So that as early as possible if they are already ready with the traffic assessment and all the necessary additions to the ordinance? So that they can resubmit the proposal even before the dry run finishes? So, we don't have actually, Mr. Chair, to consume all the days of the dry run?
Okay, so that's.
To give time to the.
So, the dry run will start on August 18?
To 31.
And up to 31, but we can, if we can finish it even before August 31, then so be it? Okay? Again, what's the problem, Mr. Mendoza?
Siguray clarify talang si dry run, si duration? That it should be until such time na makarindarin report itong PSO and market? But not later than August 31?
Okay. That's good enough. Next item, please.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor Albios?
In connection with the public hearing, Mr. Chair, may I move that we request the SP Secretariat to coordinate with the city assessor to identify the adjacent lots of the property subject for public hearing and to invite the property owners of those property?
Mr. Secretary, please take note?
Other matters, copy of Executive Order Number 026, creating a technical working group on the grant of medical allowance for city government employees.
Noted?
Executive Order Number 30, reconstituting the Naga City Inventory Committee for Roads and Bridges.
Noted?
Executive Order Number 31, amending the membership of the bids and awards committee.
Noted?
Executive Order Number 33, placing the Naga City Children's Affairs Office and the Naga City Development Office under the direct administration and operational supervision of Mr. Ray Anserdikir and Toy.
Noted?
Member of the transition committee. Executive Order Number 29, reconstituting the City Development Council.
Noted?
Executive Order Number 28, creating a task force to draft an energy efficiency policy in response to internal audit report on electricity consumption and for other purpose.
Noted?
Executive Order Number 32, constituting a council and a technical working group for the crafting of the 20 local building code with the purpose of enhancing local building regulatory. Executive Order Number 27, reconstituting the Naga City Solid Waste Management Board.
Noted?
Memorandum Secular dated July 24 from the DILG, pertaining to the supplemental guidelines for 2025 Local Legislative Award.
Noted?
Copy of Board Resolution Number 204 from Department of Transportation and Land Transportation Transferting Regulatory Board on the notice of compliance with the local transport road plan.